Thank you, future mayor.
Thank you, outgoing mayor.
Very good. I appreciate that, yeah. We've done this once or twice, Richard, I think. All right, next is the roll call. Turn this over to our lustrous Chrissy.
Councilmember Downs?
I'm here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Wile?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kite?
Here.
And Mayor Townsend?
Here. Very good. Next, we're going to have a presentation of the landscaping certification update by Veronica Isurrieta. And if I said that, I want to have a thank you very much, but I probably destroyed it. Is it good? Oh, my God, you made my day. Thank you, dear.
Well, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you today. I really appreciate it. As Mayor said, I am Veronica Isurrieta. I am the Director of PACE, which is Partnership in Community Education for College of the Desert.
My name is Anessa Ramirez, and I am the Program Specialist at PACE.
And we just want to share a little bit of information about our landscaping certification training, who we partner with the Coachella Valley Association's government to offer this training program. So the program was developed to provide workforce training for landscapers in the Coachella Valley and to address the need to reduce dust emissions and to improve our air quality. So I'd like to share a really short video of the overseeding training program and why it was developed.
The Coachella Valley Association of Governments, in partnership with the Coachella Valley Cities, have adopted a valley-wide ordinance to improve air quality. Coachella Valley-area landscapers and landscape-related businesses... Sorry, it's not sharing the right screen. ...course to help educate landscape professionals about these alternative techniques. Completion of this overseeding certification course is required to obtain a new landscape-related business license. The primary goal is to reduce dust emissions, specifically to reduce PM-10 dust emissions during fall turf overseeding. Let's learn a little more about PM-10 dust emissions.
All right. Well, that shows you a quick view of what the training looks like and how they need to go through the program. And as you can see, the training provides an explanation and solutions to the major air pollution problems that we have here in the Coachella Valley. The landscaping certification training is for applicants that are applying for a new business license or renewing their license. The certification is good for one year, so we're asking landscapers to take this training each year so that that will serve as a refresher for them. In 2007, the training was developed in response to the Clean Air Plan and our need to meet the state air quality standards. SEVAG organized an Energy and Environmental Resource Committee to do more for air quality, which included developing and launching this training program for landscapers. The landscaping certification program is free. It does not cost landscapers anything to take the training. It's fast. It takes about 30 to 60 minutes to complete each of the training modules. It's bilingual. We offer it in both English and Spanish, and it's convenient. It can be accessed from any computer, home office, laptop library, even the smartphone, or at PACE. And PACE is located in the Palm Desert Mall. We have a computer lab that if a trainee does not have a place that they can take the training, they can come to our facility to actually take the training there. We're also available to help them by phone or email if they have trouble accessing the training or printing their certificate. We're there to assist them. Oh, sorry. And we are open from Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, and available for assistance. So a very quick overview of the training. The training will provide an overview of the PM-10 dust emissions and turf renovation and seeding techniques to reduce dust and improve our air quality. It provides an in-depth guide and best practices for reseeding. It reviews water conservation goals, recycling, green waste, topsoil, and compost as they relate to reseeding techniques. And to ensure that trainees are really obtaining this information, we do have periodic knowledge checks throughout the training program. And then upon successful completion, they will receive a certificate of completion that they then can come to, take to the city to attain their business license. In 2016, SEVAG partnered with the Coachella Valley Water District and developed a new training program to expand the landscaper certification program to address water conservation. This training provides information relating to best practices of water conservation to include desert-friendly landscaping, low water use, and turf grass water efficiency as it relates to reseeding. And again, these trainings do have the periodic knowledge check because we want to make sure that they obtain those skills. And this session, they have a final assessment that they have to earn 70% or higher to earn their certificate of completion. So together, we can make a difference. So we're asking for your support to work with SEVAG and College of the Desert, first to share this information with landscapers. We have provided the city with brochures that you're welcome to hand out, and to stress the importance of this training and really help us emphasize the purpose of it, and then to refer individuals to PACE if they need that assistance. So again, today, I thank you for your time and your contribution to clean water and clean air and water conservation.
Very good. Veronica, thank you. Wonderful presentation. Just two questions. How do you promote this outside?
So that's what we are doing now, is trying to get the word out to all the cities. Again, we've been doing this for quite a few years, but as you can imagine, with COVID and our members of trainees have gone down, so we want to come back out to you and get your support in helping us to promote it.
Very good. And second last question for me is, when they get the certificate, does it qualify for them to be able to draw up plans for water conservation and changing landscaping?
It will give them techniques, but it doesn't qualify them for any other purposes than to get their business license.
So in other words, they can't come to the Water District and say, here's a plan that I did for such and such?
That's correct.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions, anybody?
Charlie, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Who underwrites the cost of the program?
Who underwrites it? SEVAG.
I see. Okay.
Yes. So they are supporting that program. And I didn't mention that trainees can find the information on our webpage, and they can also find the links to the training programs on the SEVAG webpage. And if it's something that we could possibly put on the city's webpage, that would be wonderful, too.
It's a very good idea, and I think if you check with our staff, they'll see if they are able to do that.
Okay.
It's a very good point. What, all that you're doing is a step in the right direction. I really appreciate that. Iris?
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for coming, and thank you for all this great knowledge. And I, my only question is, because we've had a number of questions asked of me and a few others through the years as far as using electric blowers instead of the, what they're using now, the gas, because of the need to cut down in noise and also cut down in the dust. Is that something that you have any positive information about as far as moving from what we're using now to electric?
So that is not part of the program that we're certainly part of, but it's something that can bring to SEVAG and express that concern and see if there is anything that we can do in the future.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we're good. Thank you very much. Congratulations. With that, we're going to move on to the next item, which is the non-agenda public comments. And this, as you know, is the opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes, three minutes per speaker. And I'm going to turn this over to Chrissy, our city clerk, to handle it.
Thank you, Mayor. So now's the time to make any public comments on items that are not on the agenda. If you are participating remotely, you would press star nine on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. The first speaker card is Ann Dunsmore.
Hi. Um, might be easier, can we pass out the booklets?
Yeah, Ann?
Yes, sir.
Hold the microphone to her. Thank you.
I brought some packets for each of you. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Ann Dunsmore. I'm the founder and president of an organization called Angel Force USA. Our mission is to raise awareness about suicide in the military community, and our goal is to stop "suicidalence," which is a word created by many of the participants in our effort. It means the avoidance of discussion about suicide. One member of the veterans' community commits suicide an hour. In that hour, they then set off a chain reaction that impacts over 130 people, family, caregivers. It becomes a generational issue. 14% of the Native American community volunteers for military service. They, too, have an incredibly high rate of suicide in their community, one of the highest in all ethnicities. Statistics on suicide in the military community did not start being compiled until after 9/11. Since then, 30,000 military personnel have died by suicide compared to 7,000 who have died in combat. To this end, I'm proud to say that we have decided to hold an annual conference, a summit on soldier suicide in the desert cities every year around Pearl Harbor Day. Somebody said to me once, oh, well, that's crazy. Nobody's going to remember Pearl Harbor. And I said, well, then that's the reason I'm doing it, because it's a never forget. We will be holding a gala. But more importantly, we will be holding symposiums. The date of these, of this conference this year, which we hope to expand, is going to be the 5th through the 7th, the 7th being a gala at the Palm Springs Air Museum in the Korean and Veteran War Hangar founded by General Ken Miles. One of our honorees is Karen Miles, his widow, Sue Groff, who is also a resident here, as well as Skunk Baxter, who does quite a lot of work and is a member, a founding member of the Doobie Brothers and Steely Dan. We are convening researchers, scientists, A-list providers of services in the nonprofit community nationally. We will also be featuring the National President of the Gold Star Moms Association. So to that end, I would hope that we could interest you, your staff, other elected officials to attend the symposium. I think you will be rocked by what you don't know about this epidemic, and I think that you will have a better understanding, because I think cities are going to be shouldering the brunt of most mental health issues. And I would love for you to know, since there's such a heavy concentration of the veterans' community here in the desert, what is best and know where to go and who to speak to. To that end, I've also left you some bumper stickers, some booklets. The, we are doing a veterans' free concert, thanks to the City of Rancho Mirage, at the amphitheater, and I couldn't be more grateful. The band couldn't be more excited. The veterans are incredibly honored. We love the memorial that you've done there. It couldn't be a better setting. On Tuesday, prior to the veterans' free concert, which the public is allowed to go to as well for a $25 purchase, we will be doing a press conference at 3:30. The concert starts at 5:30. We would invite all of you to be a part of that as we launch our national effort to stop soldier suicide and stop suicidalence. Thank you.
Very good. Now, I know, if I can go off record a little bit, I know that Iris, you are involved in this, so why don't you take what you want to say now, seeing that we have her at the podium. I know it's off kilter, but I think it'd be perfect right now, okay?
Well, thank you so much. And yes, most people know my feelings toward our veterans and the care they need and how underappreciated they really are and how they are the ones who have come to save our countries, save many other countries through the years, and never ask why or how, but just pick up their rifle and do what is necessary. They need to be more appreciated. They need to be more recognized. And I know Ann has a lot of information that she's going to tell us in a few weeks with a slide presentation and an update. But in the interim, if you would care to go onto her website, that would be helpful. You can get a lot of information. And this is the bumper sticker that she's going to be handing out, and you can obtain, just so you can advertise yourself, to create an awareness of what this situation has become. When Ann says that one veteran commits suicide every hour, it is the most frightening statistic that I had ever heard. And it's not just people committing suicide here in this country. It's when they're serving abroad also. And there's just so much to know about it, creating awareness where people will know where to go if they know someone that is feeling desperation. And I thank you so much, Ann, for being here. I look forward to your slide presentation in two weeks, and thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, Iris, and thank you for your support. And again, we hold conference calls every Monday with city council members throughout the desert, and I encourage all of you, I know, recognize a few of you from the meetings. Good to see you. And thank you for your support, and I hope to see you in December, if not before, definitely before. And I thank you so much.
Well, Ann, I would just inform that you are going to have a return visit and go even deeper into your presentation.
Yes, I will.
Very good. Thank you, Isaiah.
Thank you. Good to see you, Isaiah.
Thank you.
All right. Take care. Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
Chrissy?
The next speaker is Brad Anderson.
Hello, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I just want to take a moment of your time to talk about candidates and the city of Rancho Mirage. I noticed some incumbent political signs on the Annenberg Trust land, so I would assume, seeing that the Annberg's Trust has endorsed this person to do that, and I doubt that's true, but that's something maybe we can look into. I noticed the last election, the same thing happened with incumbents there, too. Nobody else put signs up. So that's just something interesting to know, if that's true. And that all impacts, well, actually, I'm going to sidetrack. I happened to catch some of the candidate form that was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce in Rancho Mirage not that long ago. And I noticed one of the questions was how many of the candidates were going to support the Children's Museum, the desert, I guess, is called. And they, of course, they all raised a hand. And I just thought that was odd that the Chamber of Commerce would ask that question of the candidates. And, and I guess my issue is, I have special interests that live in my neighborhood that are supported by city council members, and they support the Children's Museum. And I guess after my research into that museum or in that private nonprofit that really nobody knows anything about, it's a failed operation in Rancho Mirage. It should be relocated to possibly another location if it really wants to achieve revenue, I guess. I get in a sidetrack because I have a lot to say, and it's really not positive, because when I come to this, when I come to this diocese here and speak to your, at this city, I run the risk of having an impact to my private home in the city of Rancho Mirage through cold compliance and other issues where the city has retaliated against me. And I can, I honestly can make that claim and know it's true. And it's taking place right now. So, yeah, that's going through the city attorney, where so I'm going to, the Southern Coachella Valley Community Service District. It's one of the many special districts throughout the valley that I don't, I want to say corrupt is the best way to, to, I guess, state what they operate under. And, and of course, our city attorney used to represent that not that long ago. And I'm going to just go ahead and go off, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thanks for your comment, Brad. Chrissy?
Next speaker is Wally Melendez.
Good afternoon. I'm Wally Melendez. Good afternoon, city council, city administration, city of Rancho Mirage. Getting back to my project, fuel cell electric vehicle charging station, and the agency to contact at the state level is called California Fuel Cell Partnership dot org, C-A-F-C-P dot org. I would like to request the, the city to contact that department. I think that department might be under the Department of Energy of the state, Energy Department of the State of California. And like I said before, I heard that they pay for half of that hydrogen fuel cell charging station, which is about, I believe, about, they pay about $500,000. And I would like to request the city, the city council, and the administration to, to pass a resolution that they are in favor of this project. As the other person over here was talking about air quality, think about air quality. And I want to make a point about the military suicides. A lot of those military people commit suicide, and one of the problems they have is economic, economical. They can't transfer from the military to civilian life. The civilian life is a lot more expensive to live. You have to learn how to make money in the civilian life. In the military, they don't teach you how to make money. They give you a bed. They give you food. They give you clothes. They give you everything, but they don't teach you how to make money. So when you get out, you know how to make money to live when you get out. A lot of them commit suicide because of that. I have firsthand experience on that. I'm a, I'm a military veteran. Okay, so I got 21 seconds. So I'd like for the city to get serious about this. Think about air quality. You're very attentive to that lady that was talking about air quality. Driving hydrogen cars do not burn gasoline. Their exhaust is a few drops of water. And plus, you don't have all the moving parts that you have in internal combustion engines.
Thank you, Wally. Chris?
Again, if you're participating remotely, you would press star nine on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing no one, and there's no one on Zoom either.
Thank you, Chrissy. Then we will move on, close that portion of the meeting, and move on to council board member comment and reports. Ted, if you may.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I would like to remind everyone that next Tuesday is Election Day. It is the first time in many years that we at the local level have three positions that are going to be up for election. One of the incumbents will be running for election for the first time, Steve Downs, and there will be two other spots available. I'm pleased to say that the Desert Suns endorsed Councilmember Downs, rightly so, as well as Meg Marker and Lynn Malato. All three candidates have expressed their viewpoint of continuing the excellence and the path that the city is on. They've all expressed, frankly, the support for the way of life for our residents, the caliber of our amenities, including our world-class library and observatory, dog park, amphitheater, the way we maintain our streets and mediums. So their endorsement was well-deserved. What normally happens in campaigns, and you can see this on the national level as well as the local level, is when there are not issues that can be pinpointed, opponents will use what is referred to as happy talk. Happy talk are things like lack of transparency or things should be in the sunshine. Those are nebulous kind of expressions, which make, basically, is synonymous with, we don't have anything specific. And I think that's why these three candidates were endorsed. We look forward to their success. And more than that, we encourage you to make certain that your votes get in on time. Next Tuesday, probably around 9 o'clock, the first results will be out. More than likely, we will know at that point, the, pretty much the trend of the election, although it will, it could take another 30 days for the actual results to be confirmed. But pretty much, we will know next week who the winners are. So please, if, if you haven't already, send in your ballots and/or deposited them at the container here at City Hall. Please do so prior to next Tuesday. Again, thank you. It's going to be quite a, quite a day with the major turnover we have going on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Iris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't have any formal comments, but other than to just reiterate what our speaker today mentioned, and if you didn't get the full message, perhaps you could go online. And if you're interested in helping out with military suicide prevention, the organization is called Angel Force USA. So look online, and if you want to attend the event, it's listed there. But if you also want to help anyone who might be feeling desperation, please don't hesitate to contact this organization. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Iris. You know, one question I You know, one question I had is, do they have an 800 hotline number? Do you know?
I do not know. There are a number of organizations. Well, there are a number of organizations that are listed online for the military to contact that have 800 numbers that they can contact if they feel desperate or know someone who does. There's a lot of organizations out there that are more than willing to help.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for getting involved, Iris. You're doing a great job.
You're so welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Richard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem, you're welcome.
Today, I'd like to update the Rancho Mirage residents on a change that's happening at Spectrum and RMTV. Starting November 14th, Rancho Mirage Local Government Access Program Channel, RMTV, Channel 17, will be upgraded to high definition. With this upgrade, Channel 17 will no longer be available to standard definition, and only Spectrum customers with high definition will be able to view the government access programming channel. If you have not connected with HD receiver, you may want to be able to pick up the notice on local government access programming. Spectrum's TV app is available to those who don't have HDTV. If you have any questions, or if you would like to upgrade to an HD receiver, you can contact Spectrum Communications at 1-877-615-2514. As you know, Rancho Mirage TV shows recent city council meetings, recent videos from the city, library information, and a lot more. So if you'd like to keep up with what's going on in the city of Rancho Mirage, look into putting your set on HD, and you'll notice the difference. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And I will share that I had a panic attack the other day. I went to 17, and it wasn't there. So I ran to our city manager and said, what happened? They didn't tell me anything. So he diligently sighed and took his patience and clicked in his office, did phone calls and says, Charlie, you should get rid of that old Zenith television. So it was my television. So everybody, don't panic if you have an old Zenith, or Dumont, or anything else that's there. They will have words out. And I'm sure there will be several phone calls, Richard, to Spectrum when this does change over.
Charlie, do you still have the yellow screen for your TV?
I have that, and it's round. So but I've got to tell you that I really, I thought, oh, my God, it's gone. And there was a great moment of loss. But our city attorney calmed me down and straightened it all out. And thank you, Richard, for bringing that to everybody's attention.
As of the 14th, it'll be ready to go.
Very good, very good. And again, those people that don't have what will not get it. Do we know?
An HD receiver. So I would say that the large portion of our community likely has a HD receiver at this point. The other channels that are available all transitioned to HD years ago, so they would have lost their other channels long before they lost RMTV, so.
Isn't that a great answer? That's why I went to them.
So does this mean that those of people that have rabbit ears still are out of luck?
Yeah, so they have a HD conversion that you can go and still get your signal that way.
Okay.
If you contact your cable provider, a lot of times they're just providing them.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Iris. Last but never least, Mr. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm guessing you probably still carry on a flip phone as well, Charlie, in addition to the old-style TV?
I do.
So now that we're into November, I thought it might, I thought it might take a couple of minutes to highlight the range of community cultural options that are available to Rancho Mirage residents in our upcoming seasonal months. We are really fortunate to live in a city with a calendar rich with options for our residents to enjoy, to be entertained by, and to learn from. And so there are a few that I did want to talk about. So I think, Mr. Mayor, I believe you are going to talk about the Festival of the Arts that's coming up this weekend, and I've got my pass to go to the Festival of the Arts. Other things that we want to be aware of that are coming up over the seasonal months are the Rancho Mirage Speaker Series. They will soon announce a remarkable new season with well-known speakers. We'll have a program for all ages at our library most weekends over the next season, over the seasonal months, so please check the library website. The Rancho Mirage Amphitheater will host a new Broadway series with South Pacific in February, Beauty and the Beast in March, and Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat in April. Weekdays, there are daily observatory tours at our observatory, and there's a regular series of evening Swoon on the Moon events at our observatory. And of course, the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival is coming up in March, I guess it is. And the Writers' Festival also now puts on pretty much a year-round series of writers' series speakers at the library. So again, check the library for those. So we're remarkably fortunate to live in a city rich with these cultural options, and I hope that all of us have an opportunity to take advantage of these great opportunities during the upcoming seasonal months. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate you bringing that forward. And yes, I do have a few words, and here they are. And we are very excited to bring back a Rancho Mirage signature event this weekend that Steve was talking about. Saturday, November 5th, Sunday, November 6th, the Rancho Mirage Festival of the Arts, formerly known as Rancho Mirage Art Affair, returns to Rancho Mirage Community Park. There will be over 33 unique artists, fabulous music, and food and drinks, all in our beautiful outdoor setting. Saturday evening, Jazz Under the Stars takes place in our beautiful amphitheater. Come enjoy some wonderful music under the stars. This event is completely free to the entire community, and there is complimentary valid parking available. I hope you will join us for a weekend full of inspiration and entertainment. And for more information, you can visit, this is a long one, rmfestivalofthearts.com, and get any information you want. Or you can call City Hall. And I will say that talking to Gabe and his group, and I have been through many of these through the last 20 years, but this one, they have some wonderful, wonderful, outstanding, innovative situations going towards the artist and the mayor's trophy. And they have really expanded this into a fabulous, fabulous situation. So I'm very thankful to all of them to be thinking out of the box, as they do with everything, and we're looking forward to seeing you there. I have one more thing to end my comments with, and this is, last Saturday in my neighborhood at Mission Point, one of our neighbors by the name of Joyce and Curtis Shaw, our next-door neighbors, threw a little house party in the afternoon, nothing fancy, but invited everybody over. What I found out in talking to people, seeing that we haven't been together with COVID and all that, is they watch this city council. And what a wonderful, I mean, I was just so thrilled to know that people are out there and that are concerned with what goes on in their cities, and that are diligent, diligently watching this program, this committee, this council. Everything that we go through and do is really out there, and in a silenced way. Never knew it was going to be there. So my hat's off to them, and I want to give a shout out to Cynthia and Bob Grant at their home also, and again, to Curtis. I said I'd give you a wave, so there you go. But you filled my heart, everybody, with your remarks and coming up and sharing how impressed you are. And also, they listen to this to offset the wrong information that they get out there from other avenues, so they do watch it in earnest. So all in all, we're all doing a great job, kids, and I appreciate it. Thank you. And I believe that ends the council comments. So we are going on to our next part of, which I need my script. A minute, you're with me. Here I am. Okay. City manager, it's you.
No comments today, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
You don't want to talk about my panic for 17? That I ran into your office and threw myself around? No? Okay, very good. With that, then, we're going to go to the consent calendar. And with that also, I'm turning it over to our city manager to present the consent calendar and handle the public comments, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have five items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. And if the council doesn't want to approve that one, Lieutenant Sean Myers has volunteered to read every word of each ordinance on this agenda. Item number two is to approve the October 20th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Item number three is to receive and file the September 30th, 2022 Quarterly Treasurer's Report. Item number four is to approve contracts. Item number five is to approve demands. And before we go to council comments or questions, if any member of the public wishes to speak on one of these five items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would use the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Christie?
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any consent calendar items? Seeing no one, and there's no one on Zoom either.
Very good. Then with that, it's back to me, and I will call for council comments on any of the items. Anybody have anything? Very good. Then I will call for a motion, please.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Very good. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Next is the report and information items, and this is going to be turning over to Ryan Sandell, Public Works Director, to present the report on the Wolfson Park expansion program. Ta-da! We're waiting.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. At the last council meeting, it was asked that we give an update on the expansion project, which is going on just about a quarter mile to the east of us here. So if I can get my PowerPoint presentation up, I'll go through my slides real quick. Building off of what we've learned in the past, if anybody's in the audience or watching not familiar with Wolfson Park, we're generally talking at the intersection of Deval Drive and Frank Sinatra. The existing, very well-used park connects to the Butler Abrams Trail and is part of many nearby residents' daily life. In 2020, the city was fortunate to acquire a one-acre parcel to the east and has prepared the following concept design, which is being implemented in the field. What you'll note off of Frank Sinatra is the construction of a deceleration lane, which takes users into a parking area, which is now off-street, housing 20 cars, additional walkways, and passive landscape and seating, eating, and walking areas. So just by way of progress photos, we've been really busy out in the field with some of the infrastructure that's not seen on a daily basis, but that is very necessary for the long-term success and maintenance of this facility. We've been relocating existing palm trees that were on the site, mature and beautiful palms, to their new permanent location. And this photo was taken Tuesday of this week by the marketing department, and you can see the perimeter sidewalks starting to take shape. So from straight down, looking at the aerial, you can see the outline of the parking area is done. The deceleration lane is almost complete and will be paved sooner than later. The concrete walkways will continue to be poured. In fact, some of these sections have been poured between Tuesday and today. The extension from this asterix over to this asterix will connect to the Butler Abrams Trail. And ultimately, as we continue working, we're going to be finishing sidewalks, electrical irrigation. We're going to be bringing in our boulders, palms, trees, and flagpoles. And we should be substantially complete by January of '23. And Mayor, I have not forgotten our little field trip, where this council has consistently stated that we will, at the flagpoles, place a plaque for then-councilmember Moller. So I look forward to scheduling that when we're a little bit closer. With that, that completes my report, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Brian. And how many times did I go in and say about the flagpole? How many times did I ask everybody else about the flagpole? But most of all, I want to thank Richard Kite, and that was his suggestion, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure Gordon did.
Every once in a while, you get a good one.
And you guys did. One other thing on transparency, can you just tell if I'm putting you on the spot? What went into pulling this all together in traffic reports and talking to the neighbors and holding different meetings? This was not done in a back room that nobody knew about. And I'm only saying that because it really distresses me when people make the statement the stuff is done behind a back room or no transparency. So get a life. It is done. Want to talk about it?
Briefly. My first day on the job in April of '21 was a public meeting that was held at the Parks and Trails Commission for this project. Subsequently, we hosted study sessions at this council and several hearings or several touchpoints for the council along the way to approve preliminary and final designs. Additionally, in the audience, Charlie Nesbit, our project manager, is out in the field speaking with the Rancho Mirage Racket Club owners. And I've made contact and personally gone to two of their HOA annual meetings to make sure that that community directly adjacent is aware of what's happening. So I think that we have a pretty good record of outreach on this program. We've met our neighbors, we know our users. Some of the users that are out there daily know our construction crew by first-name basis. They're really becoming pals out there.
So you did well. So anybody that says, we work and we don't let you guys know what's going on and do what we want to do, there's the answer. And that's the answer in only one project out of many that go through this city. And it gives me great pleasure to be able to know that I have the opportunity, now that I'm leaving, to be a little more direct when I speak of these things. In the past, we have to sit here and kind of listen and listen and maybe don't say enough, but I wanted to make a point out of this. This is just one of many, many things that go on in the transparency and the work that goes behind the scenes of this staff, of this council, of this city, working with everybody out there. And I always remember if somebody said to me, you know, Charlie, when somebody says, well, you know, you don't have any transparency, or it's not the right this and that, the only reason that is said, and I think I'm taking this again, is a great quote, "The only reason you don't like it, or it's not transparent to you, because you didn't get your way." So there's my end of that speech. Thank you. Sorry about that, but I needed to say it. A lot of luxuries of retiring, I guess. So there. Okay, where are we? We're going to turn this over now to public comments.
Now, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I can just follow up with my comments in regard to your comments about our transparency. I have received a lot of phone calls through the years from people, and as you say, you know, we try to clarify things. Sometimes we do spend time on the diocese here, and we're very cordial to people who come and make comments, and we don't always answer them or try to make corrections. But when I hear people's comments, and I say, you know, all you need to do is call someone at the city. Anyone at the city can refer you to the right person, and if you can't get to the right person right away, our city manager, Isaiah, has a lot of info. away," our city manager, Isaiah, has a lot of information. He's willing to listen and willing to give you the right information and refer you to the right people. So many of our meetings and our decision-making is done at the commission levels and committee levels, and so much time is spent trying to answer questions from the public and trying to let people know that these are public meetings, and you're always welcome to come to these public meetings and ask your questions. So even though Charlie and I will not be here after December 15th, please know that, you know, we are leaving an incredible staff headed by an incredible city manager, that any questions you have, don't, don't assume anything is correct just because you heard it from a neighbor or you heard it somewhere in passing. Come to the source, ask the right questions, and I know that you'll be satisfied with the answers, because we don't make decisions just off the top of our heads. Everything is thought out so carefully, and everything is planned so carefully, with lots of input from our residents and from our businesses. So feel free anytime to give City Hall a call. You know, it's an easy telephone number, 760-324-4511. Pick up a phone and get the correct answer, rather than trying to believe something that might not be true. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris, for that. And one last thing that I will end my, my speech on is that people say to me, "People come up to this podium, and they say this, this, and that, and you all sit there and don't say anything. You don't rebut, you don't say anything other than thank you." Next. Let me just tell you, that podium and those three minutes, those are yours. That's for you to speak and say what you think you want to talk about, to relieve any frustrations that you have. For us to debate you and go into comment, or ridicule you, or tell you that you don't know what you're talking about, that's not what that three minutes is for. It's yours, to speak your mind, not for us to take you down or argue with you. However, as Iris just said, if you do have questions like that, don't think we're not thinking of it and thinking what you're saying. And you are always able to get us online on our emails, call and try to talk to us or make an appointment, and get the other side of the story. So I know I'm preaching. Father Charles is now done, and we will continue on with Chrissy. Is that it?
Okay, so now is the time for public comments on this item. If you're participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Seeing no one and no one on Zoom either.
Very good. So we were going to that, and I will call for council comments, which we did. Anybody else have anything on this? Are we good? Rick, Steve?
Just that the Public Works is doing a great job in Wolfson Park. And Ryan, thank you so much for giving, giving us that update today. Much appreciated.
Yes, very good. I did of that, did of that. Very good. Then we will close the reports and information item, and we're going to move on to the action calendar. And I'm going to turn this over to Michael Stilt. Did I blow it?
Stitt.
Say it again.
Stitt.
Stitt. Hi, Michael.
Sorry.
It's okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The California Code of Regulations contains 28 titles, which are administered by the Office of Administrative Law, with a few exceptions, one being Title 25, which covers mobile home parks, and Title 24, which covers building codes. It is Title 24, which we will discuss this afternoon. Title 24 is administered by the Building Standards Commission and is referred to as Building Standards Code, or as we refer to more commonly, the Building Code. The Building Code is updated in California every three years, which means that cities and counties are required to adopt the new codes every three years. No substantial revisions were made in this round of updates, and again, this is something the state requires us to do. It is the staff's recommendation that the city council adopt the ordinance referenced in the staff report to approve the 2022 Building Codes and amend the city's municipal code as necessary. This completes my report. Staff is happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Very good. I appreciate that, Michael. Thank you. Turn it over to Chrissy for public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. If you are participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. I did not get any speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing no one, and also no one on Zoom.
Very good. Next, I'll call for council comments.
Just have a brief comment, Mayor.
You may brief.
Looking at the current revisions, are there any major changes over the last couple of years that we should be aware of?
It's mostly multifamily, and it's going to be energy revisions. Not too many residential changes. Everything will be mostly energy changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve?
So, Michael, it kind of looked to me like many of the changes were simply crossing out 2019 and inserting 2022.
That is correct.
For the most part, this is pretty benign. It's just an update.
Correct.
To do, to follow, to follow the state of California regulations.
Yes, that's correct.
Very good. Anybody here? No comments? All right. Then with that, I'm going to call for a motion, and I will make the motion, and I'm told that it has to be read all the way through A through F. Is this still correct? Really? Really?
I mean, we can get the lieutenant up here if you want.
Hi, Cooley. How you doing? Nice to see you. Anyway, all right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for it, and here it is. The city council adoption of 2022 California Building Code Standards with amendments, A, ordinance number next in order, first reading, amendment chapter 15, two, adopted California and Uniform Codes of Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Ranch Mirage Municipal Code, have adopted the 2022 California Energy Code, 2022 California Historical Building Code, 2022 California Existing Building Code, and 2022 California Green Building Standard Code. B, ordinance number next in order, first reading, amending chapter 15, four, California Building Code, 2019 Edition of Title 15 Building and Construction of Ranch Mirage Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 California Building Code. C, ordinance number next in order, first reading amendment, chapter 1508, California Municipal Code, 2019 Edition, and California Plumbing Code, 2019 Edition, and adding chapter 156, California Plumbing Code, 2022 Edition, to Title 15 Building and Construction of the Ranch Mirage Municipal Code to adapt the 2022 California Municipal Code and 2022 California Plumbing Code. D, ordinance number next in order, first reading, amending chapter 1510, California Electrical Code, 2019 Edition of the 15 Building and Construction of Ranch Mirage Municipal Code to adapt the 2022 California Electrical Code. E, ordinance number next in order, first reading, amending chapter 1514, California Residential Code, 2019 Edition to Title 15 Building and Construction of Ranch Mirage Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 California Municipal Code. And number F, ordinance number next in order, first reading, repeating and replacing chapter 1512, 2019 California Fire Code of Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Ranch Mirage Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 Fire Code.
Charlie, I'll second that, and I think you have a job as a radio announcer, reading the small print.
I appreciate, well, thank you. I just might do that as my next me. What?
We're going to have you just come back to reread these reservations.
Listen, I, I'm all there. It comes from my theatrical training when I was a child, so that's good. Do I have a second?
He was the second.
All right. We are ready, then. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. And the next is number eight, and we're turning this over to Sonia Cooley. Sonia and I go back a long way, don't we?
Yes, we do. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, wonderful city staff. I'm Sonia Cooley. I'm your deputy fire marshal with Riverside County Fire and the fire marshal for the city of Ranch Mirage. In 2018, California Health and Safety Code Section 13146.4 was added and came into effect in January 1st, 2019. This required that all fire departments that provide fire protection services report annually to their administrative authorities, our city councils, on the compliance of the Health and Safety Code, Section 13146.2 and 13146.3. These sections required that an annual inspection, fire inspection, for every building used as a public, private, schools, hotels, motels, lodging houses, apartment houses, and certain residential care facilities comply with the building standards and include a fire and life safety inspection. Here in the city of Ranch Mirage, that has been accomplished by this fire safety specialist, Jacqueline Garcia, who is assigned to the city. And that is a conclusion of my report. If you have any questions in regards to this, I'm here to answer them. And thank you for your time today.
Sonia, thank you. Any questions? Boy, you guys are doing a great job, really, and congratulations on all the hard work and your fabulous career here with us and with Riverside. I'm so proud of you.
Thank you. You will be missed. All of you will be missed that are leaving us, so, but hopefully we get to see you around the city.
Yep.
Don't go too far. Don't go too far.
Very good.
Even at Costco.
Yes, all the time. So have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Chrissy, public comments?
Of course. If you want to speak on this item, if you're participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing no one and no one on Zoom.
Thank you, Chrissy. Council comments. Anybody have anything to say?
No.
All right. I think it's all, it's all good, Sonia. See there? Easy, easy. When you're doing a great job, just floats through. Thank you. I will call for a motion, please.
All right. I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted.
That the city council adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order, acknowledging receipt of a report made by the fire chief of the Riverside County Fire Department regarding compliance with the annual inspection of certain ordinances pursuant to sections 13146.2 and 13146.3 of the California Health and Safety Code.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Richard. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. We're really rolling through this very, very quickly. Next, we are having a closed session agenda update, and I'm turning this over to city attorneys who summarize the closed session items. Steve, cue.
Mr. Mayor, the city council is going to recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding the following cases: Vacation rental owners and neighbors of Ranch Mirage at all versus City Ranch Mirage, vacation rental owners and neighbors of Ranch Mirage versus City Ranch Mirage, hometown colony doing business as the Colony Mobile Home, Mobile Home Park versus City Ranch Mirage. And we also have another pending case listed here, but we don't have the case name specified since disclosure would jeopardize pending settlement negotiations. And finally, we're going to meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 regarding one potential significant exposure to litigation item, and the Brown Act requires that anytime we list a significant exposure to litigation item, we have to state the facts and circumstances for the record as to why there's significant exposure. And in this case, we have a former developer of the city who is requesting or demanding reimbursement that he believes he's entitled to.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. And with that, we will go into closed session. It All right. We are back in session, and this is the city council, city of Ranch Mirage, Thursday, November 3rd, 2022, meeting, and it is 3:30. Now I'll turn this over to our attorney, Mr. Steve Kijanea.
Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Very good. Thank you. If there's anything else on the agenda, anybody have anything to say? If not, we are adjourned.